All right, so we can begin Iowa City's City Council Work Session for Tuesday, March 12, 2019. First item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'll say like two sentences right at the start. First of all, thanks to the commissioners for coming. I think four of you are here, right?
Right.
And three cannot be. So as you know, at our February 19 meeting, we, a majority of our council, tentatively indicated that we did not agree with your recommendation regarding this particular rezoning, the one at 2130 Muscatine Avenue. So we are required to invite you to consult on that, and we certainly want to consult. So what we try to do, and some of you have experienced with us, is engage in dialogue with you. So maybe we can begin with, Mike here at the chair, right? Begin with you kind of summarizing for us why you all made the recommendation you did. And I know the vote was 3 to 3, so, and that defeated the motion, but let us in on it.
It's actually pretty straightforward. It was at our January 17 meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. The vote was 3 to 3 with one person absent. Mrs. Towninson was absent, I believe.
Who's absent?
Dyer.
Dyer. Sorry. Carolyn, yeah.
The vote was 3-3, which of course ends up being in the negative rather than a tie. There's no such thing as a tie. I think there's a couple of main points that were of concern, and I'll just go through with those concerns. But I voted in the affirmative, so I'm just speaking actually for Commissioner Science, who couldn't be here tonight. He sent an email, and a couple other people voted the negative who are here, so they can speak up. But I think there's a couple of concerns, and it's concerns we've had pretty regularly. One is the Good Neighbor. Actually, for the Good Neighbor meetings, they're not required, they're optional. Actually, in the Good Neighbor pamphlet, it just says that the Good Neighbor program is not a requirement, but rather recommended. And one of our concerns is, we feel pretty strongly as a commission, it's a discussion that's gone in for all my years I've been on it, that we really think that's something that should be a requirement so that we can identify and resolve. Some of the issues can be identified and resolved prior to coming to the commission, and our belief that it's best to engage your neighbors and communicate with your neighbors rather than not. Because in this particular rezoning, the applicant specifically did not take advantage of it. They said no to the Good Neighbor meeting. One other issue, and this didn't necessarily come up then, but it's a continuing thing is a belief of the commission that we need to expand the radius of notifications for the rezonings. Right now, it's at 300 feet, and we hear this all the time, and I'm sure you folks do too, where people say, "Well, I never knew anything about this." Because if you live 310 feet away, then you're not going to get a notification. Now, I don't pretend that there's some magic number that you're going to notify all the people around, but you know, 300 feet, 100 yards seems slightly small, but I just wanted to bring that other issue up. And then the other point is, and this is something of the two things we talked about all the time about Good Neighbor meetings, is the issue of elevations or drawings. Specifically, in the Good Neighbor pamphlet, which the people didn't have to do, they ask like, "What information can be, can you provide your neighbors that you will find helpful?" And it says site plans, elevation models, aerial photos, drawings, et cetera, that will help them visualize the changes you wish to make. Well, we feel the same way. We would like to be able to visualize the changes that these people wish to make, and without an elevation or a sketch, it's very difficult, particularly in this particular rezoning, when they said that they actually had three different options, and they're all quite different that they wished to follow. One was demolition of the existing building and develop it into a duplex, or hire a consultant and conduct an intensive survey of the site to determine historic significance, and then potentially seek funding for a historic rehab, or renovation of the existing structure for residential use. So I think overall, we just felt like there wasn't enough information provided for us to make an adequate study, because we do think that the role of the commission is to study, question, recommend, and maybe even criticize when necessary. And we just felt there was an absence of information. I think now in retrospect, the vote, if we took it again, would probably turn out differently. It'd turn out in the affirmative. But those are the things that we had discussed. I think it's true. Those were discussed, I just wanted to share those items with you. And some of the other members who voted in the negative may have different comments.
Great. Before I ask you all to weigh in, I need to say something else that I should have said right at the start, and that is that Mazza here, Suley, cannot be with us. It's my understanding she can hear us, but cannot, no?
No, just with the testing, she could hear us, but she's thrown in the towel, so...
Okay. Mazza's in Tunisia, so cannot be with us today. And Pauline Taylor cannot be with us also, she's in Chicago. So we have a five-person council. Okay. So any other commissioners want to say, well, Larry?
Yeah, and I want to make sure you understand, I'm speaking just for myself, only Phoebe might have a different interpretation of her rationale. But I did want to first let you, Jim, know that I have provided, I've talked to the Police Department, and I have provided immediate EMT care, because I may send you into cardiac arrest, because for the first time in my public life, I'm going to admit that I was wrong.
Oh!
Yeah. Alert the press. That being said...
We should just call this meeting off.
Yeah, we might as well stop right now. Let me go back a little bit, because Mike has laid out the issues involved. But when I first looked at this staff report, I thought this is going to be a short pro forma meeting, seemed pretty clear-cut. We might have some questions, but it looked like it would be an improvement to the lot in particular. But as the meeting started, and we started asking questions, it became clear to me that the applicant was herself not able to answer the questions that we were asking. We weren't getting a clear picture about what her plans were. We weren't getting a clear picture about the neighborhood involvement. And the more I thought about this, the more I thought, you know, we need to start sending her some signals that perhaps we might want to defer this, get these things resolved, come back in a couple of weeks. That did not happen. So when it came time to vote, I thought, you know what, there are enough issues here that they ought to be highlighted by a negative response. At the time, I just assumed I was going to be the only negative vote, that the issue would pass. And then when it became a 3-3 vote, I think at least one other commission member, he looked at me, and I looked at him, and we thought to ourselves, "What just happened?" Because I don't think that was our intent, but it was the result. So in that regard, as Mike said, if we reconsidered this, the outcome very probably would have been very different. So I would encourage the council to support this proposal. Again, that's just one perspective.
I wouldn't. So I think that...
He's clear.
For myself, when the applicant's representative came forward, they were not well-informed at all. And I had a lot of questions still regarding what they were really wanting to do, what the thought was, what's the end result? It is my neighborhood. I did not get a letter. I'm probably 310 feet away, that's all right. But I do drive by there all the time, so as I do in the entire community, as I'm out and about. And it's important to note that planning and zoning is not a rubber stamp. And just because they have pretty pictures of something that it could look like, this is a project we've done before, to me, that is not substantive enough. I want to know, really, what are you thinking for this particular area? How does this particular idea benefit this part of the community? I take that same perspective into every meeting that we have. And historically, we've asked for drawings, and you know, it doesn't have to be a million-dollar plan, you know, hiring some humongous firm, but something that gives us a little more information as to why does this person, other than money, why does this person believe that this particular project, this spot, makes sense for the community at large, for the other residents there, for the other commercial? So I still wouldn't change my vote at this point.
And I voted for it. In my opinion, there wasn't too many other things they could do with that property, since it was so small, the lot was so small, so they couldn't make it into another retail area. So it had to be residential, either a single-family or a duplex. And right now, it's sitting empty, and it's an eyesore. So anything would be an improvement. They seem not to have a lot of extra money for someone to come in and survey it. So I thought, in my opinion, I thought it was the right thing to do to let them do it.
And Billy's point was actually the reason I ended up voting yes, because at 6,700 square feet, plus or minus something, there's really not much else they could do with it other than being RS12, because CC2, and it just wouldn't work. So that was the final reason I voted yes.
Yeah, fair enough. So I wonder if council members want to ask the commissioners any questions or make any observations?
So did they have any type of drawings, like from other properties that they've done in the past?
Yes.
So you all saw that, and that you didn't think that that was sufficient enough?
I didn't.
To get an idea of what they might do without having that expense?
But that's just it, it's completely subjective. Yes, they might do, who knows what? You know what I mean? There's just too, for me, there were too many questions that were unanswered. They may have had a very successful project in one area that worked great, does that mean they're going to give the same regard to that particular property? You know, if you look around that area, there are not, there are no new homes. There's no homes built after, probably 1980 was probably the last home over there built. So to me, I want to know, what are you really going to do there? You know what I mean? I don't want it to end up being something that was, "Well, we're just going to put up something really inexpensive, because we're going to rent it, we're going to make a lot of money." I don't know. I want it to impact the community in a positive way. So what does that mean to them? Because that's a subjective question. What does that mean to me?
As I recall, there was, so the place had been empty for quite a while.
Years and years and years.
Their roof had been leaking.
Giant holes in the crack.
So everything depended on whether or not they could actually save the structure. They really wanted to save the structure. But if it wasn't, if they weren't able to do that, that's when they would take option two or three, which made sense to me.
Maybe the day lighting, the hole could be day lighting and used to sell the house. Are we kidding? Are we kidding?
It's painful.
Rock me, John, Susan, anything?
I'm trying to recall why the applicant didn't have a clear notion of what direction they were going. They just hadn't had an opportunity to do a thorough inspection of the building, so therefore...
Well, they presented to us the dilapidated condition of the building, so I believe they are aware of that. And actually, it was just in the staff report, the three options that I reiterated to you. So I think they, at the time they presented, I don't think they knew what they wanted to do. It was one of three options. And you know, Phoebe's got a pretty strong point there. We want to do what's right for the neighborhood, and so three options is leaving it pretty wide open.
I'll just comment. What I find interesting, and I don't know, to me, we've been heading more and more in this direction all the time, and I think, I guess from my perspective even troubling, is I look at P and Z and zoning as land use. And when we start evaluating the individual projects that are going on that land, to the extent that it seems like we're doing now, where is that line in terms of the subjectivity of P and Z or council on these approvals versus what is actually land use? In terms of, gee, I don't like the design, I don't, you know, I don't like what that looks like. I mean, we've got design standards for multifamily, we've got design standards in the town crest area at least for commercial and, you know, in other areas of the community. So that's where I get concerned with some of these, is where is this, where is that line of really looking at these from the standpoint of rezoning, of what is appropriate land use versus do we as commission and council members approve of your particular project on this piece of land? And I think that uncertainty is something that can be very, very frustrating for developers, particularly if they're developing in an area where there's already design standards. And again, depending on the project, how much money that means they have to put into schematics and that sort of thing. So that was one of the reasons that this one in particular, one, it was a downzoning, and a residential. And the only real options were either a single-family or duplex, that I was just kind of surprised, so...
I agree. It's always that subjective thing of where is the line? You know, this is a little tiny parcel, so if you're too explicit, I mean, are we getting to the point of spot zoning? But I just think that when somebody comes forward, they at least need to give us the data for us to make a decision from. And that was it, but they really gave us nothing, other than, "We think we might do this." And so is it going to be a single-family dwelling? Is it going to be a duplex? What exactly are you going to do? And for the sake of the neighbors, neighbors are very concerned. We have to, I think it's our responsibility to evaluate that it's going to fit in with the character of the neighborhood as we see it. And so I think as the voice of the public, that's our responsibility to ensure that the neighborhood feels that there's somebody that's representing them and the applicant in an impartial way.
Given that it's an infill, I can understand that more, but it's also interesting, because we do rezonings for residential all the time, you know, like single-family, even maybe duplexes and stuff. And if we get into form-based code in more residential areas, you know, there's going to be none of that. I mean, so it's, I don't know, it's just an interesting quandary, I think, that we have.
Well, I think your observation's valid, and subjectivity is always very difficult.
Yeah.
So Mike, when you began speaking, you mentioned three main reasons why you, the commission voted against, or voted 3-3, and thereby defeated the motion. So one had to do with the distance required, minimum distance, no, the maximum distance at which notification was required, right?
Because the way the current rules are, if somebody's going to rezone, then the neighbors within 300 feet of that rezoning need to be notified. But we have the same thing you get all the time, where people say, "We didn't hear about this."
Yeah, yeah. So I just want to make sure I list these and get them on the table again. So the second has to do with Good Neighbor meetings. Again, it's not required, but you thought it'd be appropriate. And the third has to do with elevations or renderings of the building, so that you'd have a sense of what it would really look like, and neighbors would have a sense of what it would really look like. So what I'm thinking is, those are all completely legitimate concerns, and we should follow up on them. It seems to me it would be helpful if the commission would recommend to us specific changes about those three items. All right? And we may agree, we may not, but make some recommendations. But I don't think the first two in particular are valid reasons for denying the rezoning, because they're not required.
Correct.
Then the other thing I think about is, I know Jeff Ruener, city manager, he and I have talked several times, and I think with other council members as well, that we need to think through when elevations or renderings should be required. And that's a legitimate question. Susan raised a legitimate response to that, and you just presented a different response. But my own feeling or thinking is that there are circumstances when such renderings or elevations should be required. But the rules ought to be given ahead of time.
I agree.
So we need to revisit that. And I know, Jeff, wherever you are in the crowd, yeah, I know we've talked about scheduling a specific work session on that topic. Our planning staff is pretty busy, we haven't been able to get to it. But we should do that, so that we all get on the same wavelength. And when I say all, I mean neighbors, commissioners, council members, and developers, and so on, and property owners. So, yeah, so that's my main thinking about those three points.
Jim, can I back up to what Susan had asked, or talked about land use? So I get what you're saying about that, but at the same time, when someone is coming to planning and zoning to talk about a rezoning item, originally, it was zoned to something else. So my understanding of what our position is, is to really look at, why does that old zoning not work? And what is it about this new zoning request that benefits the community? So I get the, I totally understand the, yes, this is land use, it makes sense, downzone, whatever. But originally, it was that way, so why? You know, I just want to kind of make it understood the way that I look at being on planning and zoning and have to look at asking those questions and understanding why the next zone makes better sense. So if that's helpful.
Follow-up on what Phoebe said, I guess I'm tracking you, Phoebe. I hear what you're saying, because I think this is a quintessential political question. We're not dealing with development in an existing zoning area in which we have existing guidelines. We do not have the authority to interfere with land use decisions in that context. The question is, is when we change those, that is political, and that's going to involve some uncertainty, because we're going to get the beliefs, the opinions, the preferences of individuals as we make those decisions. So while I think our political philosophy should be as consistent as possible, and we shouldn't arbitrarily deny reasonable zoning requests, I think certainly, just given the political nature of both bodies, and at least for now, we still have the Home Rule authority over land use decisions. It has not been taken quite yet. This is something that I think is very important. And I want to make one quick comment about something that has not been talked. I'm a big neighborhood commercial guy, and it's my understanding the original zoning designation here was community commercial, too. And I actually don't want to lose those sort of willy-nilly. However, this question of parking, as it was explained by the developer, I think he brought up some very good points, that if you do redevelop it as a community commercial zone, the number of mandatory parking requirements would essentially make it unfeasible. So that's almost, as Jim said, there is some issues that were raised by you that we'll address another day. For now, we apply these standards as they are. And given the fact that that remodeling to that commercial with the parking requirement make the footprint so small that it'd be basically unfeasible, I get back to this residential use. And I think the designs that we saw in response to some of the concerns that you had raised were very good, and I think especially when we're talking about changes within neighborhoods, we do need to proceed very carefully. And Larry, to defend your waffling, I wanted to, I'm going to defend your waffling. I wanted to vote yes, so we could have this very discussion, even though I'm still going to support it. So I'm going to be a little more consistent, because I thought this was a land use decision that it would be good to talk with you about what your individual decisions were. Because we are going to lose this community commercial zone, and I am going to support the rezoning, but I think that's an issue for another day in terms of what we do with parking in our neighborhoods for community commercial. Excuse me.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I'll just mention that I do appreciate your comments about the Good Neighbor policy. I too feel, you know, requiring that would be helpful. You know, it's, there's physical context, and then there's also the people who actually live in that context, and I think they can bring insight and concerns to the project. Expanding the notification, I think, is a worthwhile thing to discuss. And then the elevation in site plans, you know, that has been an ongoing issue. I know when I started with planning and zoning, when there was a rezoning, we always saw plans, site plans, elevations, that were conditional on the approval. And what we're moving more toward, at least in some cases, seeing drawings, but they're defined as conceptual, so there isn't really any certainty that that's in fact what will be built on the site. And I think, in this particular case, since it was a downzoning on a small site, the direction the design could go is very limited. So I'm less concerned in this situation. But in other situations, where the project has more scale and magnitude, I do think, you know, the question of elevations in site plans become important, and as we've said, I think it's, we need to define when we trigger that as a requirement of the, or conditional to the approval.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody? Good deal. Thanks so much for coming, sharing your views with us.
Appreciate it very much.
Larry, irony. Don't get them mixed up there, Jeff. that we add to our pending, list of pending work session topics, this topic about elevations, when should they be required, and so on.
We're getting close with our, you know, you asked me to frame that issue up, I'm working with the NDS staff on that, and I think we're hoping for one of the May work sessions for that, but we'll put it on the pending list.
Good deal. Okay, so our next topic is a discussion about the 400 block of North Clinton. How do you want to proceed?
Yeah, Danielle's going to present on it. I thought I'd just frame it up a little bit for you, and I don't have the memo in front of me right now. But a few weeks ago, I guess a few meetings ago, I'll say, the council considered the designation of 410, 412 as a historic landmark. That ultimately failed, although a majority of you voted to landmark that, it required a supermajority. So ultimately, there was no landmark designation. As you know, we explored the transfer of density rights concept prior to you making that decision, and unfortunately, could not find a workable solution there. However, we didn't want to just stop after that vote. We reached out to the property owner and said, "Is there, is there anything that we could do that would lead you to voluntarily designating that as a local landmark?" And the developer was more than willing to come to the table and have that discussion. And it turns out, they may have an option to buy property directly adjacent to that. And if they can achieve a density that is higher than what is currently allowed in our code, they would be willing to potentially, you know, they'd be willing to explore that with us. So what we thought we'd do today is have Danielle present to you a very rough framework. We don't have a proposal for you. We want to just put the idea out here, get your opinions, and hopefully get a nod from you on whether this type of solution that we're presenting would be workable. What we don't want to get into is a situation, which was what we had with the transfer of development rights, where we spend a couple of months exploring this, the developer spends time and money exploring it, and then find out there's really no appetite for it. So we're not asking for a hard yes or no from you, but just generally, if you're okay with the concept.
Good evening, Danielle Sisman, NDS. So I'm just going to provide a high overview of, and maybe a little bit of a refresher for where this property is. It's outlined here in yellow. The upper portion of this is the property that was previously considered for landmarking, and the lower portion is the area that the owners of the northern property are considering acquiring. That'd be in the 400 block of North Clinton Street. What they've proposed, just kind of very back-of-the-envelope sketch, is a possible four-story building...
is oversimplified here as if the building were built entirely of either one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom units. It would show, allow a density anywhere from 29 to 87 units per acre, depending on the mix of bedrooms actually built. And that potential rezoning to a planned RM 44, planned high-density multifamily, would bump up that density somewhat, anywhere from 33 units to an acre to, up to 100. Essentially, the planned high-density multifamily or PRM has similar dimensions as RM 44, but it does allow for some flexibility in design to score or allow for greater density through height and lot coverage and things like that. Projects that would be in the planned high-density zone must demonstrate certain public benefits to achieve that flexibility, and that's accomplished through a point-scoring system that's already built into the code. Essentially, those projects earn points according to this table, based on the elements on the left-hand side, masonry, building materials, increased open space, preservation of historic buildings, providing assisted or affordable housing units, going above and beyond on streetscape and landscaping, and some specific designs for windows would earn points. And then those points are spent by the developer at their discretion on a table of available bonuses for density, essentially. So, staff has looked at, or would look at, proposed, looking at, if we were to rezon to a PRM, there would still be code changes that would be necessarily necessary in addition to the rezoning, essentially to allow for additional density above and beyond what a PRM would allow, doing that through several mechanisms at site dimensions, also looking at reductions in private open space. There'd have to be some parking ratio changes, and then there'd be an emphasis on design review. So, that's just kind of the thumbnail sketch of zoning considerations, even to just kind of kick off some discussion.
Yeah. So, if I could just, at a high level, frame it. So, what we're, what we're really looking at here is a concept in which we maximize density on a four-story building, with four stories being roughly equivalent to what Courier Hall is across the, across the street there. So, it would be a very narrowly tailored code amendment within the PRM zone. We would basically give additional density bonuses for the, for landmarking of an adjacent property. More than likely, this would be the only case in which it would apply. But again, the developer would be able to maximize density with a four-story building. And until we get into deeper discussions with the developer, and they have a chance to do some preliminary engineering, we don't know exactly what that density will be, but as Danielle said, it could be 79, 80, or more units per acre.
Questions, folks?
If we had landmarked this property, the adjacent property, the developer would have lost the ability to develop a certain portion of the property. Is the loss in value of the landmark approximately equal to the increase in value that the developer will get here with the proposed rezoning? You don't have to do an exact figure, but is it roughly the same, or is it significantly higher?
I don't know that we've done that comparison. I know we compared some square footages on, just on the property to the north with those, but we haven't compared it to the...
You don't know whether it's a greater value than what would have been lost of the landmark? Okay. I also have a question related to parking. How much greater, if at all, is the parking going to be required with the greater density that's proposed here?
We wouldn't be able to know that until we had a specific mix of units that they would want to achieve. It could be significant. They're talking about one, potentially one lower level of parking available on the site, so that would not necessarily, that would not, that would require some additional parking ratio changes.
Yeah. So, I think the developer would like to maximize parking onsite underground, which is, as Danielle said, one level. It's not going to meet the requirements, so as part of this text amendment that we would have to create in the PRM zone, we're going to have to provide some additional flexibility with those parking standards.
On that point, one of the things I think about is, I'm going to assume that the project would be oriented towards students, if in fact it gets built. And that site is located on a cam bus line, so that greatly minimizes the typical extent to which a person would need and use a private automobile. So, I think we ought to take that into account as well. So, are there other questions or observations?
What was the, when we were talking about this during the historic designation, there was some calculation of what development potential would be lost.
Yeah. And I recall that we did that calculation, but I don't know that I recalled the comparison off the top of my head. We could, we could get that to you.
An architect would be used as opposed to sort of a draftsman on this proposed site. Is that the plan? Is that your understanding? So, it'd be a high-quality design?
Yeah. We haven't talked through specifically what design review would look like, but, you know, we have required design review there. I've mentioned that to the developer, whether that's staff design review, or we'd involve historic preservation in looking at that because of the adjacent. We haven't really gone down that path yet, but if it's going to be a four-story building of this mass and scale, I think design review is important. We haven't talked about, you know, architect requirements or anything like that.
And the current property would just be demolished? Is that the thought?
Correct. The corner lot there, and the lot, and the one on Davenport as well.
Has anybody in historic preservation been consulted to see if they really wanted to get that on the list of potential landmarks? I mean, the building that would be demolished. And if not, you know, that, that's important to know.
Yes. We've reached out to the historic preservation planner to double-check, to make sure that the adjacent property was not already identified. I don't know that the HPC has had a chance to do any more research into the property to identify that, but it's not already identified on their list.
It's not on their priority list, I know that. Yeah. Yeah. So, one of the things that strikes me as being real important is the fact that Courier Hall is right across the street. It's, I think, four stories in height. It has a certain architectural appearance to it, which I think is quite admirable. And then there's the historic building that we want to preserve. So, I think it'd be crucial to have high-quality design review with regard to any particular building that we proceed with. It could be a great asset to that area, and it could really undermine the area if it's, if the quality of architecture is really not compatible with those two existing buildings. And I don't mean identical with, I just mean compatible with. Any other thoughts, folks?
Well, I might, you know, I'm feeling pretty good about this, actually. I think, you know, the movement, and we're seeing this, at least where we have Form-Based Code. Form-Based Code is form-driven rather than dense, you know, unit-driven. So, you know, we, we don't pay as much attention in those instances to what the actual units per acre are anymore. It's more, what's the size of the building that becomes the critical, critical concern? And as we've mentioned, I think it, the four stories seems to, the context seems to support that, as long as the, as you said, Jim, the quality of the building design is consistent with what we see across the street. I think it could be, you know, and I don't know if improvement is the right word, but consistent with the character of the neighborhood and potentially a very nice addition, not to mention that we say 410, 412 Clinton.
Yeah. It gives us a viable pathway to accomplishing that.
Right. I mean, it's, it's similar in some ways to, you know, Tate Arms, you know, right next door, which I think is one of the nicer buildings in Riverfront Crossing.
I think the owner did a great job with that new building.
I think that, that's a good example of, you know, well-designed. I think that's a five-story building, so, yeah. I think this, you know, we went through that whole TDR exercise, and it didn't materialize, but we seem to have an opportunity right next door to achieve the same end.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, the PRM would be a Form-Based Code?
No.
Oh, you just mentioned the Form-Based Code.
Well, I mentioned the, in that, so we're establishing a maximum building height of four stories.
I'm willing to have staff move forward and see if we can work something out. I think the design is important, as other people have said, given the location and the context. So, and I think the four-story ballpark. And I think it's important that we look not just at four-story, but at height in feet.
Right. Good point.
So, just, I'm not saying it can't be higher than Courier if the main floor is a little higher, but should, in my opinion, should be somewhere in that same ballpark.
Well, I appreciate just having them come back to us with an option to even do the historic preservation as an option. I don't know that that's something that we'll typically see, because they had all the right to do whatever they wish. So, I do appreciate that opportunity, and I think this is what's been proposed so far sounds like it's worth looking into, and, you know, I'm looking forward to what comes out.
I think the other key point for me is, is that, you know, if we were looking at this area in the first instance, I don't know that I would want this level of density, but given where it already is in terms of density, calling for multifamily, it's already starting out, and they already have a right right now to develop an RM 44, correct? If we, if we didn't change this. And so, I think what this allows us to do, because I actually, I love that, that structure that's there right now, so I wish it didn't have to go.
It's a beautiful home.
I do love that structure. And I'm also always concerned, especially in our inner-core neighborhoods, when we change that fabric. You know, I've talked about before in some of the other parts of some of our inner-core neighborhoods, we didn't get that fabric quite right. But in this particular case, Jim, I think you bring up a very good point. Given its proximity to Courier, the student, that's a perfect place for that, high-density, I'm willing to, to the extent that we can with our code, to reduce that parking footprint to the max feasible that staff think is necessary. And I appreciate the developer reaching out to us. I think that's a very good thing, where so often in our community, we're sort of two ships passing in the night, and then we get all mad at one another, and we don't actually reach out and try to resolve these. So, I also want to really commend them for doing that. If it were another part of the community, I don't know if I'd be as supportive, but given its proximity, I'm going to be supportive of this. But I do really want that high-quality design. I really want to make sure that it's compatible with the adjacent structures, and that we continue to daylight this. And I also preach staff daylighting this as early as possible, because it does involve a historic area, even though it's not formally historic, is my understanding. So, I'm going to be supportive of it moving forward, and we also, of course, get to preserve the treasure that we were concerned about losing, which means a lot to me.
I think the bus piece is important, too, and I'm glad you brought that up.
Oh, I do, too.
Because it, you know, it's in effect transit-oriented development. I mean, this corridor is a perfect location for reducing the parking requirement.
Yep. Okay, Jeff, I think you're getting a green light to proceed with further discussions with the developer. It looks like a reasonable solution on the face of it to us. So, tell us more later on.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. That means we can move ahead to the next item on our agenda, which is clarification of agenda items. Does anybody want to draw attention to anything in particular? I know we're setting public hearings for the comprehensive plan amendment and for rezoning concerning the area around Forest View. That's a huge thing. It's been works for a long time now, and I understand it went through planning and zoning. What, last Thursday? Is that when?
Yes.
They voted 4-2 in favor of it, right? Yeah. So, that's a pretty big deal. Very complicated project, too. I guess I want to mention item 9A, which had to do with the Eastern Iowa Community Bond Project, there was correspondence pertaining to that. And I just want to note that Jeff wrote, I think, an excellent response to an email from the Bond Project outlining our city councils and city government's perspective on the topic that they raised. And I would note as well that in 15 minutes, a vigil at Church of the Nazarene will be conducted, and I want everybody here to know that, upon request from Pastor Tony Smith, I sent to him a statement to be read on my, and therefore, really on the councils and city government's behalf, presenting our perspective about our distaste and so on for the scribbling on the side of Church of the Nazarene and other posters that have been displayed around town and that kind of thing. I just want to make sure you all know that.
I don't see this on our, a part of any of our packets. It was the email from Greg Hearns about the, from the Iowa City Federation.
It's in the late handout.
It's in the late handout?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not sure when we should discuss that. I don't know if we can discuss it to a degree now, or whether we should wait until we get to the, to the formal meeting and the motion about approving the budget.
Oh, down here.
So, I'm kind of seeking some advice from Eleanor on that point.
Yeah, I remember this one. I'm just trying to...
It's basically an email to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Recommending a certain kind of action with regard to the hourly, temporary hourly employees and asking us to take immediate action with regard to it. So, it's a topic that we will need to discuss, but I don't know that the work session is appropriate.
Discuss it at the budget.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
I mean, you can, you can discuss it under council, or agenda items now, I think. It's related to the budget.
Do you want to, is it legitimate to discuss the substance or the process? Because he's kind of raising a process question.
I think you can talk about it. You can talk about agenda items, and it's related to an agenda item. It's related to the budget.
I guess I have, I have an understanding that he may be here for the formal meeting to give comment, so maybe we want to wait until after he comes to give comment.
I don't have any objection to that, because we just need to discuss it before we vote.
Sure.
Okay. So, we'll hold off on that.
Related to the can we discuss it topic, Mayor, you had brought up the question of taking a formal position on the, for lack of a better term, sort of solar tax that's considered before the legislature at this point. You included an article from Mid-American Energy.
No, it's not from Mid-American.
Oh, I'm sorry. From, leading Heartland about Mid-Americans' proposal in the legislature. Thanks for catching that. Did we, has this been, is there enough notice here to substantively talk about that? Yeah. So, that's where I wanted to, we'll defer then for next meeting. We don't have the 24 hours' notice prior to, for public meetings purposes. That's the problem.
Right. And all I intended to do with that email is say, assuming we can do it before the legislature acts, that we should discuss whether we want the city to take a position on that particular bill.
So, I'll bring that up at pending...
I mean, you can, you can discuss it under council, or agenda items now, I think. It's related to the budget.
Do you want to, is it legitimate to discuss the substance or the process? Because he's kind of raising a process question.
I think you can talk about it. You can talk about agenda items, and it's related to an agenda item. It's related to the budget.
I guess I have, I have an understanding that he may be here for the formal meeting to give comment, so maybe we want to wait until after he comes to give comment.
I don't have any objection to that, because we just need to discuss it before we vote.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll hold off on that.
Yeah.
Related to the can we discuss it topic, Mayor, you had brought up the question of taking a formal position on the, for lack of a better term, sort of solar tax that's considered before the legislature at this point. You included an article from Mid-American Energy.
No, it's not from Mid-American.
Oh, I'm sorry. From, leading Heartland about Mid-Americans' proposal in the legislature. Thanks for catching that. Did we, has this been, is there enough notice here to substantively talk about that? Yeah. So that's where I wanted to, we'll defer then for next meeting. We don't have the 24 hours' notice prior to, for public meetings purposes. That's the problem.
Right, and all I intended to do with that email is say, assuming we can do it before the legislature acts, that we should discuss whether we want the city to take a position on that particular bill.
So I'll bring that up at pending work session topics to the extent it's not moot by the time we bring it up into, or the next meeting, but maybe moot.
Any other agenda item questions? I don't have any. All right, let's move on to the info packet discussion, February 21st, that packet. Anybody want to bring anything up there?
IP2, it's funny, when we have three weeks of a break, it seems like it was a long time ago, but, yeah, I included that, that study that Minneapolis is doing on its snow removal procedures, and, you know, this, this past winter has kind of been the exception, but I think it highlighted, for me, the, the issues we have in Iowa City with snow removal. It wasn't until this year that I learned from a report in either the Gazette or Press Citizen that the, the snow mounds that generate, you know, accumulate on the corners are no one's responsibility, according to Stan Laborman, I think was quoted in the article, that because it's not, not generated by natural event, it's the snowplows that generate that snow, it's no one's responsibility, which I hadn't, hadn't realized. But in any event, what I would like to ask is if we could have this as a work session topic. I am interested in understanding better, you know, what we, you know, what we might do, how we might approach this. I, you know, I think it seems especially to me an issue in the central district, where you have more, more people walking, that the conditions really break down. I mean, it's, it's just not possible to safely walk through the center.
Well, not just walking either, right? I mean, if you're on a, in a wheelchair.
Oh, well, in a wheelchair, it's even worse. Yeah, if you're among the, you know, vulnerable populations, elderly persons with disabilities, this winter, I can imagine, I mean, I was feeling housebound, I can't imagine how, you know, a more vulnerable person would have felt. So, you know, I found the report from Minneapolis interesting, especially, you know, some of the, where they looked at what other cities are doing. So I, I think it's worthwhile having a discussion of how we can improve things, because I just don't think the current system is working.
This season, we certainly did hear from a lot of people within the community pertaining to snow, and Jeff has sent an email to council members stating that we currently are at 1,280 snow complaints for the season, and ordered 368 times the clearance. And then, just for a point of reference, 459 snow complaints, as well was last year, and this year we're at 1,280. So it has been a very hard and significant winter on our residents and people trying to, you know, walk throughout the community, as well as our city staff trying to keep up with all of the, you know, complaints, which my assumption is that this kind of took everybody in the moment by surprise with the consistent snow. So I appreciated what you sent, just for some comparison, because I, I was definitely hearing the complaints from citizens within our community, and so we're not the only one that have, you know, some challenges when it comes to snow and ice. Ice is very difficult to manage.
I almost fell down, fell down four or five times this year, walking my dog.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think currently crosswalks were almost virtually impassable in many parts of the city over the past many weeks, and the question becomes, what, if anything, can we really do about that? I don't know that we need to schedule a work session as such for it, but I really, I would like to know what the staff thinks is possible to do, and what's being done in Minneapolis may provide a model for doing something somewhat differently from what we're doing now. So that, that's my take on it.
Yeah, I think a memo is a good place to start, and if we, you know, need to go further.
That's what I had in mind.
Okay.
Anything else on that packet? Okay, February 28th. IP2 Listening Post update from Kelly. Seems to me, given the schedule that Kelly lays out, we should schedule a Listening Post for late May or early June.
I want to be a part.
Yeah, Kelly suggested, indicated, I don't know, four or so suggested sites. One area we have not gone into over the past three years, I think, is the northeastern part of the city. So I'd suggest we try to find a place in the northeast, maybe at Blackstones, maybe at one of the schools. I'm open, of course, to possibilities, but somewhere in the northeast. Anything else on that packet? I'm hearing a lot of silence.
Well, I did appreciate the notes from the Listening Post at the IMU, where concerns about lighting and transit service were highlighted. I think it gets back to the, you know, the transit routes that we have, and, you know, are they adequate, particularly where you have, with the students, you know, they have a different schedule. So nighttime service, again, vulnerable, what I would call vulnerable populations, that sort of ties into the lighting question. You know, I don't know where I would suggest we go on that, but they were definitely, you know, I heard those concerns. I think they're valid concerns.
Okay. Okay, how about the March 7 packet?
I do have one item for there, sorry about that. And that's from the Community Police Review Board. There was an item that was suggested by one of the members, that they, it was regarding the city policy on requesting council attendance at board commission meetings, and so I just wanted to just bring up that that has come up for the Community Police Review Board, and they even mentioned if there was a way for maybe a council member liaison who could meet with a board member. So I'm not sure that's something that comes up often.
At every meeting, or?
It doesn't state at every meeting.
I think they're working on a proposal to go back to the board. There's a committee that's going to do that. It wasn't ready for this packet, they're also meeting tonight, so it'll probably be at their next meeting when they discuss it.
Great. Okay, okay. All right, how about the March 7 packet?
On the, the March 7th, I guess I'll tuck this into the pending council work session topics. I sent out late last night to the city email, the, this question of the parent drop-off at Horace Mann. And to try to simplify, I think, what, what I see the issues as being, is the, the current plan has a proposal for parent drop-off on Fairchild, which would provide parking for what I estimate to be around six vehicles. That plan, as I indicated in my email, has some significant impacts on the entry to North Market Square Park. And so what I've suggested as an alternative approach would be to maintain parking on the, on Fairchild for three vehicles, which would be three less than are provided now on that, in that location, and three vehicle, a drop-off zone for three vehicles along the east frontage of North Market Square, and preserve the entry in between those two parking areas to the park, which also serves as an entry to Horace Mann from the south. So it's, it's essentially, in other words, trying to identify a location for three parking stalls that would not, in effect, turn the entry into a part, a parent drop-off zone along the frontage of the park. So we preserve three in the existing design, and then look at alternatives for the three that would be relocated. I'm suggesting they could be placed along the east edge of the park, the, and looking at some of the district's own documents, it included parking along that east side of the park as one option, but it doesn't have to be there. It seemed like a, you know, that, that places the six more or less in the same location, but there are other, other possibilities where it could go.
Sir, are we, I'm, I'm sorry.
So I'm...
For a work session.
I'm suggesting, you know, that we schedule a work session to, to look at that in more detail.
Yeah, so it would be, it could be an item on the April 2nd work session, right? Because John's memo or email came a little bit late, just like mine, about the solar interconnection net metering thing came a little bit late, but it seems to me it'd be appropriate to talk about that, see if the council has a view it wants to share, and, but we can't do it now. Yeah.
That's fine. I just want to make sure you're all aware, it is part of the, the current plan that John referenced is part of an approved site plan, so the district has all the approvals they need to proceed. When we were out there looking at the site, John, it looked like they had utility locates done and the excavation area marked, so I don't want, I just don't want anybody to be surprised if that work is already scheduled and happens before your next work session. We have shared the documents that John provided with the district and asked them to consider it, and they did and got back to me and said that they prefer what the approved site plan has. So you're, you're free to talk about it April 2nd, I just don't want anybody to be surprised if, if work is done before then.
So we cannot request them to put a hold on that work?
We can request it, but, I mean, we don't, I don't know what impact...
We can't compel it.
We can't compel it, thank you.
Well, given our desire to discuss it on the 2nd, it seems to me to be appropriate to request that they put a hold on it until we at least have a chance to discuss whether we have a view, you know, about it and want to share that view with them.
When was the site plan approved?
June 18th.
June 18th?
Thank you.
Of 2018.
Then no, I would not, I mean...
June 18th of 2018?
We're talking, we're talking eight months, almost nine months since that site plan has been approved. I don't think it's appropriate at this time for us to be going back and asking them to potentially make changes or hold off on work that they may have scheduled.
Well, are there four people who would like to ask them to defer action until we have a chance to discuss it as a council?
Can we do that for public meetings purposes to deliberate as a body, since we didn't get the 24 hours' notice?
I think you can give brief direction to staff. I think that's okay.
About just asking them to defer their action until we have a chance to discuss it?
Yeah, we have to start being, though, a little careful about these late things that we're...
Yeah, so I'm not trying to get us into a substantive discussion about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I would say is that the plan that I, that I had sketched out is consistent with a significant portion of the...
John, yeah, we're not going to have a substantive discussion about it.
We're not going to have a substantive conversation about this.
So what I'm wondering is, are there four people at the table right now who, who want to ask the staff to ask them to defer action until we have a chance to discuss it? And I understand you say no, right?
Yeah, I'm going to say no, and I would just encourage whoever has those thoughts to reach out themselves personally and have that conversation.
I'm going to say no, we can't get into details, but I think we're too close to September. I think that's the opening date, so...
Okay, well, that decision's made. All right, moving ahead, any other items in the March 7th packet?
I wanted to bring up IP4, pending work session topic, IP5, my own memo, and IP6, the memo from staff. Just a little bit of background in terms of what I'm proposing. As many people know, the community recently learned that the Lucky's Grocery Store is closing. Of course, many people in the community also know that the city of Iowa City does have a tax increment financing agreement with the developer and not with Lucky's. Tonight, I did not want to discuss all of the details. It's very difficult to get into the details. The developer may not wish to amend the existing agreement with the city of Iowa City, and if so, we would not be able to change it because we have an existing agreement. I think where council potentially would be able to weigh in in the future is if the developer expressed any interest in modification. And so tonight, I just wanted to have a brief discussion about at least some things that I would like to see at least explored, and then have a discussion 45, 60 days from now. It may be if the developer does not wish to modify, in which case, there's not a lot to discuss, but it does strike me that the original agreement requiring 33,000 square feet of grocery store space frankly was a mistake, and that I think staff should have additional flexibility to lower the footprint of the food-related store in that location, and secondly, at least to explore the possibility of a food-type market along the lines of Inubo. It may be that the developer has no interest in that, but again, what I did not want to see happen is, we're three or four months down along the line, we get a proposal, and it's not really what we want to see, or we essentially could be repeating, in my view, the same mistake twice. So that's sort of what I wanted to do. I know a lot of people have expressed a lot of interest in this, and I think it would be helpful if there's that interest to allow more time to explore that as an opportunity, and also to engage with them. Of course, the developer probably has a lot of details that would not necessarily want to get out of the public eye at this point, but again, I think in terms of our position, I think we should telegraph as much as we can at an early stage what we would like to see. So that's sort of where I'm coming from, that.
If I can add, the, so going back and looking at the history of this one, the grocery store was not something that staff insisted on at the time. That was the tenant they brought to us, and we, we put that in the development agreement. So what we have told the mall ownership group at this point is that we would be willing to consider any range of tenants that they bring, but the tenants have to be of a quality that is not only going to allow for their own success, but, but allow for the, the surrounding businesses in that neighborhood to, to grow and prosper as well. So it has to have a net positive impact on the entire kind of southeast region where that mall is located, but we, we have already signaled to them at the staff level that we are open to uses other than grocery. Obviously, that will require an amendment to the development agreement, and you will have a say, so if there are preferences that you'd like to express, it's important to get those to the mall ownership group as soon as possible.
That's primarily, Jeff, and I'm glad that you brought that up, is, at least from my position, and I don't know if they're supporting council for this, just as a first step, I would like to explore the food-related market concept. It may be that that's not feasible, it may be the developer does not have an interest in that, and it may be that the alternative uses that you've explored and identified, and they may identify, prove to be more practical, but at least in terms of a first step, to me, this has a ton of potential. We have a template in Cedar Rapids, we have board members in the city of Iowa City that serve on that. We have board members in the city of Iowa City that serve on that, and so I think there could be some real synergy with that area. Again, we can't cover all those details, but I'd at least see the first step to at least explore that. I want it to be food-related, but not that, and so, again, I think it would make sense to give us a little bit more time to just signal this as an issue, see where we are 60 days from now, and hopefully be able to have a little bit more of a substantive discussion because we are early on, but I've said enough.
What I would suggest is, I like the fact that staff has indicated to them that we're not wedded to a grocery there, but something that is positive for the mall and also kind of net positive for that whole part of the community, the southeast side of town. Obviously, hopefully something that helps generate foot traffic in there for the other businesses as well, but just positive economically for that whole region. Given, to me, given that staff has already done that with the mall owners, what I would encourage, Rockne, is rather than us taking time to get into nitty-gritty, why don't you try and get those people who've done that kind of work and are on that board for Inubo connected with the mall ownership through Jeff and let them just start having some conversations?
Yep. There's already been some discussion, but I think I didn't want to necessarily do that until council could signal that they even had any interest in at least exploring that as an option.
I don't think we need to get into that kind of nitty-gritty. I mean, I think if, I think if staff comes back and says, this is the proposal of who they're going to bring in, we feel that it's positive for that area than, and meets that various criteria, I guess I don't want to sit here as a council member and try and tell them, I'm not a retail expert, I don't want to sit there and try and second-guess what businesses could go, could go in there and meet the rent requirements that they have and help draw the foot traffic. So to me, if we leave it more general and maybe make those connections, if you're comfortable with that part of it, Jeff, I...
Yeah, I mean, we're going to do that anyway. Anybody that contacts us with an idea, we're going to put them in touch with the developer.
Well, I do love your idea, Rockne. I think it's, you know, the Inubo concept, and I don't know their financials and how that works.
You need to get some front money, too.
Okay, yeah, okay. But I mean, I love that community aspect of various vendors being in one location, like the Inubo concept. So I would agree with Susan to, you know, have the developers connect with some Inubo people and start having that conversation.
Putting them in contact with...
So no one objects to me facilitating that with staff, then?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Just wanted to be, okay.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'm conscious of the time, and I want to make sure that before we get to the formal meeting, we have a chance to discuss the controversial Mormon Trek four-to-three lane conversion. I want to make sure staff has a chance to speak to us about it.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to propose one other thing, though, real quick. The next one on the agenda is deer management.
I don't think it'd go quickly. That's my concern, and we have...
Well, we've got staff here that won't need to be here for the rest of the meeting except for that one item.
Well, that could well be for the four-to-three conversion, too. I'm not sure about that.
I don't know, most of our street staff is here all night.
Well, I think we need to do the four-three, so...
I'd rather go deer management. What does everybody else want to do?
I'd agree with four-three. That's a big issue.
He's silent.
Come on, Bruce, come on, Bruce.
It's an overwhelming three-to-two.
No vote is against you.
Or three-one-one or something, I don't know. Okay, so with regard to the, which item is this? Item nine in the March 7th packet has to do with the conversion of Mormon Trek from four lanes to three with bike lanes on either side. So Kent, would you be able, willing, and able to, oh, no.
Kent must have been biking or something.
Able's tougher than willing, right?
Yeah, maybe he's not willing, able.
I am willing.
Yes, I wonder if you could walk us through that memo?
Yeah.
And especially drawing attention to your responses to the factual claims that have been made by residents and other users of Mormon Trek.
Sure, be happy to. Kent Rollston, transportation planner. So in your info packet from March 7th was a memorandum from myself, as well as the city engineer and senior engineer about the Mormon Trek four-to-three lane project. Just some quick background, this project has been at least discussed by staff to some degree for about 10 years and discussed by, I think, the council and staff more seriously for about five years when a transportation safety improvement program grant was received from the DOT in 2015. As far as the background goes, the original concept with the transportation safety improvement program grant was for a four-to-three lane conversion, or what's known as a road diet, essentially from Highway 6 to Melrose, a little shorter than that, but that's the essential bounds of the project. Since that time, the project has grown to some degree based on needed maintenance. So along with the four-to-three lane striping has been some work that's already been completed last year, and the engineering group can tell me if I missed something, but basically ADA curb ramp work will be done, pavement patching, overhead street light replacement, and signal, traffic signal equipment replacement, as well as the recently installed northbound dedicated right turn lane at Benton and Mormon Trek.
So Kent, just quickly to clarify, in the question number seven, when the question was how much will the project cost, the 1.5 million is for all of that stuff, and only 30,000 of that 1.5 million is for the restriping to go from four to three, is that correct?
Correct, correct. And I would also add that the restriping will need to be done regardless because of the pavement patching and the other work that's associated work. So that 30,000 really will essentially be spent regardless of if we stripe it the way it is today or stripe it as a four-to-three lane. And there might be some margin there, but that's, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, yes, the project's grown, as Susan just mentioned, but again, the four-to-three lane part of it is very, very small. And in terms of maintenance, to give you an idea of what we're talking about, some of those maintenance activities may have been accelerated a little bit, but the fact remains that we've even had some overhead streetlights tip over in recent history, actually rot out and fall over, so you know, this is...
Not on Mormon Trek, but somewhere else, right?
No, actually, on, this would be the part of the projects that's just north of Mormon Trek, so that is basically between the railroad viaduct and Melrose. So I mean, a lot of this work is necessary regardless of the four-to-three lane project. It's all necessary regardless of the project. As far as the question answers, would you like me to go through those sort of one by one, or do you want me to just answer the questions you have?
Most of them.
Okay, okay.
Because I think it's really crucial for the public to know that we heard the questions that have been asked.
Sure.
We've gotten the data that's necessary to respond accurately to the questions.
Yeah, that's a good point. So let's start with number one, because I think this is one that the council had some discussion on, I think, at maybe your last work session. There was unfortunately an error in the consultant study, so Snyder and Associates was hired to basically review the city's work and the DOT's work to make sure we're getting the project we need or the project we want. Unfortunately, there was a typo essentially where they had said they collected data January 12th. It's actually January 21st, in fact, when both public school and the University of Iowa were in session. So that's an unfortunate typo.
Kent, how can you verify that?
The data is actually included in the memo, so to the extent that it's, I mean, it's actually the computer-generated information that's got a date and timestamp on it.
Thanks.
Other than that, it might be hard to prove, but yeah, no, we're confident that Snyder and Associates did it when they, when they should have. Further, that count itself was only used to validate the counts that the city had already taken. Some of them are a year or two old because it took us a while to get the data collected, and some of that was collected for the traffic safety improvement program grant applications. So basically, what they did is they took a count and compared it to the counts that we had previously taken, just to make sure they were close. You know, if they're within two or three or five or even 10% of the ones we took, they were confident then that our counts were good. Had they taken that count and said, oh, you know, we're 20, 30, 40% off, we would have had an issue. So that count was really just to validate the information anyway, but it was taken at a correct time. As far as, I'll just quick for question two, in terms of vehicle collisions, the data's in the memo. The data we're seeing for collisions is pretty much, has pretty much not changed in the last decade. We're looking at between 30 and 40 collisions a year on that stretch of Mormon Trek. Average daily traffic volumes, there's been a question, you know, are the traffic volumes still what they have been, and can they still be supported by a four-to-three lane project? The answer is yes. They really haven't changed all that much in the last decade or so, so this is average daily traffic volumes on Mormon Trek. In fact, we were seeing a downward, sort of a downward trend in average daily traffic up until sort of recent times, and that's for Mormon Trek as well as the rest of the community. And we're well within the thresholds for what the federal highway administration tells us works for a four-to-three lane conversion. They say upwards of 20,000, you really start to need to take a hard look at these. We're more in the 10,000 to 15,000 range on the high end of B-15, so we're confident that we're still well within that threshold. As far as the vehicle delay in the corridor, there was a study done by Snyder Consultants, we really don't think there's going to be a whole lot of additional delay. I would say in the magnitude of maybe a minute north to south or south to north during peak hours, but I think all along, as we've brought this project to the council, we've mentioned that four-to-three lane projects do add a slight amount of delay, or they can add a slight amount of delay, but it's just that, it's very slight, so we're not concerned that it's going to become a major issue during peak hours. Well, let's see. Traffic diversion has been brought up by some of the community members that live sort of west of the project in the Shannon-Dublin Tipperary area. And, you know, I don't think that's going to be an issue because we think the capacity is there on Mormon Trek, the actual theoretical capacity of the street to handle the traffic. However, we're more than happy to collect some data, and we will already collect some data pre-project to post, so we can kind of see if there's a major uptick in cut-through traffic in that neighborhood. I don't anticipate it, but we'll definitely get, collect the data so we'll know. I think we've already touched most of the rest of these. Oh, you know, how will the, how will we measure the success? I think we'll, again, besides measuring cut-through traffic in some of the adjacent neighborhoods or lack thereof, hopefully, is we'll also take a look at the level of service through the corridor. So we always talk about this level of service, A being good, F being bad. We can at any given time collect more data, go back and make sure the level of service is where it needs to be. I think we'll find that out quickly, because if it's not where it needs to be, we'll all hear from the public about that. So I think it'll become apparent, but we can actually go in and use some software and look at that again and make sure things are working for vehicles as well as pedestrians. But I don't, we don't anticipate any issues.
Thanks, Kent. I'm thinking about level of service, and that's a partial measure, isn't it? Because it measures the freeness with which automotive or motor vehicular traffic can flow, right? It doesn't take into account pedestrians, it doesn't take into account bicyclists, it doesn't take into account anything that could happen along the roadway, meaning any kind of economic development opportunities. It doesn't take any of that into account, it's just about traffic. So it's a valuable measure, but it's very limited.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. We can measure pedestrian level of service now as well. Primarily, we see these as good for pedestrians because you're actually not crossing as many lanes of traffic, but that remains to be seen, and we'll, that'll all sort of be, you know, measured after the fact if we need, if we think it needs measuring.
Okay, and you have a paragraph in here as well that says, responds to the question, basically, what are you going to do if you discover it's not succeeding, that it's a real problem?
Right.
So what's the answer to that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think if it doesn't succeed, it'll become very apparent to all of us very quickly. And along with our annual striping plan, so every year, either all of, or we try to get all of the city's pavement markings repainted, it can be restripped back to a four lane. I would, I don't know this, but I would anticipate that, again, it's probably in the neighborhood of $30,000, but we would be doing that regardless, either as a three lane or a four lane. So if it's not working, we can shift back to a four-lane section. We hope we won't need that, but that is always an option, and we've, we've mentioned that to the council before. Same as what we had said on First Avenue, the recently completed project, is that if it doesn't work, you know, we can always switch back, but we don't believe that'll be necessary.
Kent, we've talked a lot about the projected reductions in accidents, somewhere between 19 and 47%. We don't have data on the projected reductions in personal injury or fatalities, correct?
Right, yeah.
But do we have data in terms of how many personal injury accidents have already been there? And then presumably, if we can do that, can't we then correlate that if there is, maybe not exactly, but if there's been X number of accidents in this time, and we're expecting a 19 to 47% reduction in accidents, maybe that will sort of correlate downwards?
Yeah, that's how I would do it. I actually talked to the Department of Transportation's Office of Safety about this, traffic safety, and even they say it's, every roadway is so much different, it's hard to predict the number of reduction in fatalities, for instance. And in our case, fortunately, we don't have a lot of fatalities anywhere in the community, which is a good thing. So it's hard, it's hard to measure those, but the actual severity of collisions is on attachment B in the memo, and it actually shows the severity of collisions. Primarily, they're property damage only. You know, we don't have a lot of severe accidents, but also any, I would argue that any one of, number of those accidents could be severe. So when we're reducing the number of overall accidents, you're also therefore presumably reducing the severity of those as well.
And is it 35 or 25 along there?
35.
35, yeah.
Any other questions for Kent?
If, like, the lights, you know, during high-traffic time, will the lights have longer green lights so that traffic can flow through, or will there be any adjustment there?
Right, so the whole corridor will be re-timed as part of the project. The nice part about this is you've got that center-left turn lane, then well, you'll actually get a permissive, protected permissive left signal, so all through the corridor, rather than sort of hanging out there in traffic, if you're hanging a left turn, you'll actually have refuge, and that's the major plus about a road diet. Yeah, but the whole corridor will be re-timed, and that's another benefit. So because the timings now might be a little bit stale or a little bit off, so to speak, we hope that we won't, you know, with the offset and a little bit added delay because of the four-to-three lane conversion, we might actually make that back up again with the added northbound right turn lane that adds capacity, and then also the re-timing of all the signals.
And are those lights censored? Like when you get to the, it detects your car and then it...
Correct, right, they're video detection, so it looks like a little camera. They're not actually recording anything, but they're, they're actual video detection.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks so much, Kent.
Thank you.
It's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Maybe we have time to do the deer management.
Okay.
So that would be, what, item eight? No, item seven.
Seven, I think.
Item seven, deer management. Jeff, are you going to speak to us about this?
I've got some good backup in the audience, if needed. You know, we've been working on this for about a year now, and we've, we've been struggling to get the approval that we had hoped to get from the, from the state of Iowa. So twice in 18, we applied for a sharpshooting permit from the Natural Resource Commission, and twice, we were denied. You have a memo in the packet from me that I had a lot of help with putting together from the staff who's been working on this, and that's Captain Bill Campbell and Assistant City Attorney Sue Dulick, who are both in the audience. The short of it is, after the denial in December, we have had conversations with Department of Natural Resources staff who work with the commission. Again, the commission is a politically appointed body, so the staff, just much, much like we staff commissions, that's the role of the DNR staff, they give us the best guidance that they can, and the guidance that we have received is contained in the staff memo there. Essentially, we think that it is plausible that they will approve a one-time sharpshoot if we commit to a five-year management plan that includes some type of hunting, presumably bow hunting, but that they will not permit any long-term plan that is reliant on sharpshooting beyond year one. Because the, some members of the public have asked about sterilization, we also inquired about that as an option, and were told that that is very unlikely, that we would get approval for sterilization. That actually does not come from the Natural Resource Commission, but from the DNR director. So state code gives the authority on sterilization to the Department of Natural Resource Director, and the feedback that we got that is, it is highly unlikely that the DNR director would ever allow a sterilization option. So really, I think there's a couple of, a couple of paths. There's always the do-nothing path, which in this case is becoming tougher because of the explosion of the deer population we've had in the last couple of years. So I think really what we need is, is some input from you, some direction from you on whether you would like us to proceed with another application to the Natural Resource Commission that would include a sharpshoot in year one, followed by public hunts in year two through five. And we don't have details on what those public hunts would look like, where they would take place. We would work with DNR staff, we would look at Cora Ville, Cedar Rapids, other cities that do it, and put one together that we think is right for our community. But without that piece, I'm not sure it's worth going back to the NRC. So that's kind of where we're at, and hoping to get some direction from you.
One of my questions when I looked at this is...
One of my questions when I looked at this is, and I don't know that you've gotten an answer from them on the target population, they indicated that the 25 per square mile was too high. I mean, if we put together a five-year plan and say, okay, we'll do one year of sharpshooting, and we don't have the right weather, we don't have whatever, and we can't begin to get it down to that 25 per square mile, anything I've read, and I think there was stuff in either your memo or theirs, that you're not really going to decrease the population with, like bow hunting. You might, you might sustain it, I mean, you might be able to keep it even, but if we're still at, say, 25 and they want us down to 18, it would seem like we're not going to make progress with that. So I guess part of my question is, one, if we don't reach that goal in year one of the sharpshoot, what, are they going to give us flexibility to have more than one year of sharpshooting to get it down to that target level? And number two, I don't think we had a single person come in front of us that had any appetite for bow hunting in town.
Nobody.
The, I can't, you know, the second piece aside, the first piece on the, the goal for deer reduction, you're correct, we did get feedback that 25 deer per square mile is too high. The, don't have a magic number that we would land on, but it's probably under 10 is what they would suggest. So...
How do they expect us to get there then with just one year of sharpshooting?
Well...
It's a rhetorical question.
I think, I think we have to work with, you know, we have to work with our contractor to try to get, to try to get there. But I, what I would say is, I think probably our, our best option would be to proceed with that hunt in year one with a commitment to hunt, and then we're going to have to do annual counts. And if those annual counts prove that we didn't get there, and those hunts, you know, we don't believe the hunts are going to really keep us at that level, much less make progress towards it, then at least two or year, two or three years down the road, we have data to say, this just isn't working, and, and could potentially convince them at that point to go back to a sharpshoot. But I don't think we have the standing with the NRC to, to go there and really make a case for anything beyond what they've kind of hinted they would approve.
Jeff, and I, to me, the big question is this, are we going to expect, I'm not a deer hunter, but are we going to expect that if deer hunter is shooting with a bow and arrow, there is not an immediate kill is my understanding in a typical deer hunt unless I'm mistaken? Are we, are we going to have deer, injured deer, running throughout our community and, and bleeding as we try to track down? Is that a possibility?
I think we would, we would structure the hunt to try to minimize that possibility. Is it a possibility? Yes, particularly if we're hunting in and around residential areas like...
Where would the locations be?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to get into that. What I can say is, in Correville, in Cedar Rapids, I don't think they have that problem. But, but again, every city's going to be different because your hunting areas are going to be different. So we would need to look for hunting areas, be it public or private, that would minimize the chance of, you know, wounded deer walking into somebody's yard.
So I guess what I would like to see, even though we don't have a great opportunity to do it, is I would like you to at least see and explore the sterilization option. I don't think sterilization is, is ideal, but I at least would like you to explore that because, because frankly, I do not want to see deer hunting in the, in the city limits. And I'm frankly outraged that we're having this sort of problem. None of us wanted to do the deer hunt, I think that's clear in the sense of, we all viewed it as a tremendously, tremendously tragic thing that we had to do, but we were concerned about human life. And so this commission is inhibiting our ability to protect our residents from, you know, from danger. So that's my, that's going to be my vote.
I'm not interested. Yeah, I'm not interested. I think the information we got from, from White Buffalo, and, and he's the wildlife biologist and works all over the eastern part of the country at least, that sterilization would not work in this environment. I mean, you just have too many deer in and out, and all it takes is one buck that you don't get, and you got 40, 50 does impregnated or more. I mean, so they were, they were going to spend, what is it, $1 or $2 million to try and sterilize all of them on an island, a Staten Island. And again, all you got to do is get one buck swimming across the river and there go all of those plans. So I think the idea of sterilization, from what they said, and just, I mean, I grew up in a family of hunters in Vermont, and deer travel, and we don't live in any kind of an isolated environment that, that they indicated would be at all practical for sterilization. So I just don't want to have staff wasting their time on it.
Yeah, I'm pretty skeptical about sterilization too for precisely that reason. But I'm wondering if, if we do a sharpshoot in the first year and get below whatever the target is in terms of density, why do a bow hunt the next year unless we know that the count and density have increased? Why would we want to, why would they want us to do that? So it would seem to me, you do a count, and if the count shows there's, you know, growth in the density and it's a problematic growth, then do something different the second year after, you know, skip a year and then do that follow year.
I think it's viewed, I think there's, it's, there's a, there's a, a pretty safe assumption that the population will grow, and they, they look at the hunt as, as trying to maintain your numbers, not necessarily continue to draw them down, but maintain them. And then you, you do do the counts every year to make sure that you're able to maintain. But I, I don't think that they, you know, I think if they said, well, if you're just going to wait a couple of years, you're going to find yourself right back in the same population or in the same...
Okay, so here's another topic for me. And many months ago, Jeff, I shared with you a recommendation from a friend of mine who lives in a rural area, and he says basically, don't just let anybody go out there and start using a bow and arrow and try to hunt for deer. Have some kind of way of, I don't know the verb he used, but some way of sort of calling the people who would be permitted to go out there and do some bow hunting. So if we can set something like that up, I think that makes it more tolerable because otherwise I just hate the idea of...
Could we have professional bow hunters? I mean, that's a good point, Jim, actually. Could we do a professional bow hunting organization to do it?
I don't know if that's been breached at Bill or Sue, would you mind helping me out on that one? Did you hear the question?
Yeah.
Bill Campbell, Police Department.
Hi, Bill.
I think the answer to that's going to be no. They're really very, very protective of the private hunter, the non-professional hunter. We got no sense that there would be involving a professional in those years, two through five was really not an option. It was going to be a public hunt.
Do any of those commissioners, do any of the commissioners live in cities?
I don't know the answer to that. It's a commission of seven, I do not know where they are from.
It just seems to me, in reading some of the documents we've seen from them, it just seemed like a very pro-hunter approach, not so much concerned about what our issues are in the urban area really, but more of a pro-hunter approach.
The idea, and we were very specific in asking this question of staff, it really needed to be a public event in years two through five. So to have it be a private, sharpshoot in year one was acceptable, but to have it be a private hunt, if you will, was not something that was, that was specifically addressed.
Does anybody here have a magic wand?
It's a hard one.
It's ridiculous.
I'm not willing to go forward and commit to a public hunt. I think we, which means we don't do the sharpshooting, which is very frustrating.
We have to do the sharpshooting. I mean, the population...
Well, let me finish. I mean, I think, I was here for the public forum on the deer hunting, and I will tell you, of the 40-plus people that were here that night for the public, every single one of them said, regardless of what we ended up doing, well, I won't say everyone, there were a couple hunters here.
Bow hunting.
Yeah, do not do bow hunting. It was incredibly, incredibly strong view of the people that came. I would say there may be two exceptions of people who spoke publicly in favor of bow hunting. Everybody else was typically, some were in favor of the sharpshooting, some wanted, you know, to try and sterilize, et cetera, some didn't want any shooting, any killing, no matter what. But there was 98, 99% of the people do not want bow hunting. And I, you know, I respect that opinion, and I'm not going to, I don't like the idea of not doing a sharpshoot because the population is just incredibly large, but I, I will not support a commitment to public hunting.
I guess for public hunting, if Correville is doing it, I haven't heard any negative things about bow hunting personally from Correville. Definitely, you know, sharpshooting, I mean, it's not ideal, but I think we do need to respond to the deer population. I guess if we say yes to this, the bow hunting is kind of along with the package still, I guess we don't have to do it if we don't want to, but...
I mean, one, one thing I've kind of gleaned from the, the memos was, first of all, that the, the counts with the sharpshooting would come way down, which I think means the remaining population is significantly less than I think we were anticipating. And I was, I was also, while I didn't really care for the idea of, of hunting either, in reading the memo from DNR, I felt more open to the idea that, you know, managed hunts of a much smaller population, which is done, from what I gather, all over Iowa, may be a possibility. You know, I was, I was at least open to the, having that discussion to see if managed hunts, especially with the idea that we'd be working off a population that was significantly reduced, would be worth considering.
And I still have that question, is, will one year of sharpshooting be significantly, give us a significant enough reduction? Because I know at least one year that we had the sharpshooting, they didn't get anywhere near their goal in terms of the numbers. So that still comes back to my question of what happens if we have that first year and we don't really get anywhere near where we want to be.
We have not approached White Buffalo with that question specifically. I think your observation's accurate, but we have not specifically asked White Buffalo, if we were to ask you to get to this level, would you be able to do that in one year? How long would it take? What would cost be? Any of those questions, we have not asked those questions.
Okay, thank you.
So it seems to me we're pretty stuck, if I understand correctly. We clearly need to do something with regard to managing the deer population in our city, but our public is overwhelmingly against doing what the state is telling us we must do. So...
So I guess, I'm tracking Susan on this, should, should this be a, mayor write a letter to them and express our concerns? I mean, this is about protecting human life, plain and simple.
I don't know that that would get us very far.
It may be, but it's sort of here I stand. I mean, it's just sort of, the only reason we're doing this is to protect human life, that's it. And we're letting essentially a lobby affect our ability to be able to do that for support hun, and I support hunting in certain places. I'm outraged that we don't have this tool and that we're essentially in a position where we, we have a situation where we cannot address a peril that affects our residents. I don't know that we have, I'm, I'm not going to support bow hunting.
All right, here's what I want to suggest, I don't know if the rest of you will go along with this, but given the time, 16 till, I suggest that we let this sink in until after the formal meeting, when we'll have to come back to the work session anyhow. I don't think Bill needs to be here, I don't think, you know, I don't think Sue needs to be here, but we'll have time to process the discussion that we've just had and then see if we have some clarity about what we five people think should be done.
I would also suggest that we might want to put this back, put this on an agenda for our next meeting in terms of getting this out to the public that we're having this conversation, because a lot of people don't read the info packets, they read agendas.
I agree with that.
And so if they didn't happen to go through the info packet, they wouldn't necessarily know that we were having any kind of a substantive discussion about this issue, the deer population issue tonight. So I would encourage that we think about coming back. Is that an issue if we wait till early April? Is that a problem?
I think the next opportunity to be on the NRC agenda was April, but, but we're really looking at a, a hunt in the fall or winter next year at this point, so...
We've discussed this, staff has, and I think that it would be reasonable to think that for us to have some requests to them by fall is really what we need to be shooting for. To go any later than that into the winter would probably not be wise, but to do any type of sharpshooting at this point is probably unlikely until we'd be looking at something in the winter next year.
Okay, so we can revisit this at our next meeting on April the 2nd, right?
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that, because, and I think Susan's exactly right, the public needs to know how we feel trapped in, in a, in a situation that is not of our making and is not a, there's no good resolution to it.
And get more input from them.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, it's 14 till or whatever, so let's take a break and we'll re, adjourn the work session till right after the formal meeting. Okay, so we stopped at the March 7th information packet and discussed several items, and now we just need to finish up that packet. So does anybody have any other items they want to bring up?
Jim, you wanted to let the deer management thing sort of sink in. I guess Susan's...
Yeah, but I heard the suggestion that we move, defer it to April the 2nd.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to let us sink in.
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't, this was not an action item, it was in the info packet. So we either need to specifically put, ask to have it put on the agenda or in the info packet again so that we don't forget to...
Well, I think if, if your intention is to draw, you know, public in, then we'll just put it on the work session agenda. I think that'll get more attention there. We'll just copy the memo back in the info packet, but...
Okay.
Probably, I don't know, an announcement to the public.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea too, Jim.
Otherwise, it'll just disappear.
Okay.
Because if we make a decision on this without making sure the public really knows about it, we're really going to hear about it, because people were very, very vocal about it before, so...
I agree. Well, maybe that's a good topic to talk about, is that, that, the pending work session list there, which is your IP for. Right now, we already have two items tentative, least scheduled for that. That would be the 101 Lusk, so revisiting, you guys, you wanted to revisit the 101 Lusk property and talk about our next steps? And then the Northside Marketplace Form, Northside Marketplace Form Base Code, you asked for that to be placed on the, the next possible agenda. So you'd have deer, 101 Lusk, and Northside Marketplace Form Base Code all in one. That's a loaded work session.
Yeah, but I don't, do, do people think that we need to have much of any discussion ourselves at the work session? I mean, to me, we need to wait until we hear the public. I mean, and, and they're not going to have an opportunity to comment at the work session. So their first real opportunity to comment is during community comment after the consent agenda, so...
So is it possible, I'm sorry.
I mean, I don't know that we need to take formal actions, I don't know if it makes sense to have it on the formal agenda, but it almost seems like we need an opportunity to have some discussion after the public has had the opportunity for input at the community comment.
On that point, so I was wondering if we could put it on the formal meeting agenda or whether such agenda items require some action? I was just thinking we could schedule a public hearing and have it on the formal meeting.
Can we do that?
Yes. No, you don't have to take a formal action to have something on the formal agenda.
And we'd need some kind of presentation by the staff so that we're all on the same wavelength about what we're hearing from the NRC in Des Moines and, and that kind of thing.
Yeah, that makes sense, so people could then weigh in, right?
Yeah.
At the, during the formal.
During the formal, yeah, that makes sense.
Is that okay?
So for, for the 2nd of April.
We'll just do it right after the planning and zoning items and...
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Well, wait a minute, because we've got those two big public hearings about the, about Forest View, basically.
Forest View, yeah.
The second one for rezonings attracts probably hundreds of people, it seems like, or substantial.
Do you want to do that first to get that over with?
It's your call. There's going to be a lot of people here for both issues.
There's going to be a lot of people for deer too.
Yeah.
Just be another 11 o'clock special, maybe.
We could move it to the April 23rd. You know, at this point, we, we not, we're not going to get a sharpshoot done this spring if the season's passed, so we're looking into the fall. What I don't want to happen is for...
the fall. What I don't want to happen is for us to just keep pushing it to the backburner and then come fall, we don't get the permit from the state and we're right back at it. But moving to April 23rd would be, okay?
That'd be fine.
That makes sense to me, yeah.
Still on the formal? Because as long as Forest View's on there, you're still going to get a ground here.
Yeah, so it's an agenda item, people know that we're asking them to share their views with us. But, you know, presumably there'd be some, some brief memo, or brief enough, from the staff so that people can read that and have a sense of the background information that we now feel we have.
Yeah, I think based on your conversation today, we can take the existing memo and then add a few, you know, we can talk with White Buffalo and get some thoughts on, can they get the numbers down in one season, you know, maybe give us a rough estimate of cost. We can start to explore some of the ways in which a public hunt, in ways that we can mitigate, you know, wandering deer during public hunts, that sort of thing. So we'll work on that.
Okay.
All right, good deal.
So on April 2nd, I just want clarification, we talked about discussing Horace Mann and the drop-off condition, wasn't that what we talked about April 2nd?
Thought the direction was not to put that on the work session, but that's up to you.
I thought that was the notifying, the-
Yeah, I think we said, we'd like for you to notify, I think a majority of us wanted you to notify them that we were going to have it on, we're going to have a brief discussion on April the 2nd and just ask them to defer action until at least we have a chance to express it.
That's what failed.
No, that failed.
Sorry, okay, I was wrong about that.
It wasn't a vote, so, I mean, you can, you can do whatever you want.
Clarify what you want now.
Yeah. So, my recollection of what happened is Jeff wasn't going to say, you said to Jeff, "Don't say anything to the school district," but you're going to have it on the April 2nd agenda.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
But like I said, whatever you want to do is fine.
That they're not going to delay action, we're not going to ask them to delay action.
Right, that did not, we did not agree to do that.
Yeah, okay, I'm okay with that, of course.
I just want to clarify, I think it's, I think I should notify the school district that you're going to talk about it so they're not surprised by the conversation. We just, I'm going to stop short of asking them to pause their project, right?
All right, so a little more clarification. Lusk Avenue and the Northside Marketplace would be itemized as the first two work session topics. This one, tell me if I'm wrong, would not be itemized, but it would be one of the topics that can be discussed. Or, do you want it to have it like number three and itemized stuff right at the start? Am I clear about the question?
As opposed to just under info packet?
As part of an information packet.
I mean, I think generally, and we've started doing this, is when it's clear you're going to talk about a particular item, we call it out specifically on the agenda as opposed to just saying information packet. Not very good notice.
Is that okay for all of you then? Okay, so that'd be like the third item, I guess, highlighted right at the start?
Sure.
Okay.
I wanted to mention IP 11, the thing I sent to you all, excuse me, about the lease disclosure informational packet, and I wanted to get your thoughts on it. Essentially, to give you a background, is that if you remember to the fall, we sent a memo regarding the idea of a housing information packet. Through conversation with city staff, it was apparent that regulating move-in points would be too difficult, from my understanding. And then we felt that adding some adjustments to the informational lease disclosure was necessary, on our view. For example, excuse me, I have something in my throat, changing the rental deposit section of the lease, informational lease disclosure, to have that, the law regarding that you have to have a written statement, so tenants are more informed. Then changing the link to a more comprehensive and site that has more information and also that has, is owned by the university, because currently the link is kind of this third-party website that the university partners with. And pretty much the website that it currently goes to basically says, "Go to Student Legal Services," so it makes more sense. And then the, another item was to add information about if a tenant has health and safety issues, that they have the right to use legal services and contact the Housing Chief Inspector. And added on to that was information on the rent abatement ordinance, so that tenants could be informed and be more inclined to reach out to the city. But also stating that rent abatement is only granted by the city and it's only granted in limited and extreme situations, excuse me. And then the last thing was having a mechanism that, and this isn't well thought out, but having a better mechanism to, when you're, to better distribute the lease information disclosure packet, because current, and possibly add an item that essentially, this was the suggested item that we thought about, that it could be explored, the time of getting a rental permit to show that you have signed the lease information disclosure packet. And that's just one more mechanism to ensure better distribution, but ideas, other ideas can be explored as well. And I wanted to get your thoughts on it.
So this will be a requirement for all renters, landlords within Iowa City, is that correct?
So currently the lease, so currently there is an informational lease disclosure, and that's currently under city ordinance. It says you have to distribute this, and this would essentially be modifying that informational lease disclosure.
Okay.
It's an acknowledgement and lease disclosure, basically intended as a way at the beginning of the lease to put down basic information about, you know, housing code provisions, that kind of thing, so that, with the hope that the landlord and the tenant will be on the same page. I mean, it's not a part of the lease, it's signed by both the tenant and the landlord. But, and that already exists right now, but Gustav is proposing amendments to it.
From a legal perspective, what's your reaction to it, Eleanor? Because I mean, I don't, personally don't have any problems with it, I just, I don't know what-
We can convey to you what, Stan and I met with Gustav, and I think both Stan and I felt pretty strongly that this form is way too crowded with information already. It's long, it's dense, it's given out at the beginning of the lease, not at a time when somebody's having a dispute, you know, when they may think about going to legal services, et cetera. It comes at the beginning of the lease. I have some concerns about using it as a mechanism to tell one party where they should get legal advice as opposed to the other. And we really encouraged the students, the website, the link to the good website is fine, because that's what we had encouraged the students to do, is beef up their ways of getting this information to students, whether that be through legal services or through their website, et cetera. But to continue to kind of add to the form and put more information in the form, first of all, I think a lot of, it just, it's a piece of paper at the beginning of a lease term, that it, the information that the students want to get to the tenants is not relevant to them at the beginning of the lease term when they get this piece of paper. It becomes relevant down the road, and there's a lot better ways to get that information in my mind, whether that be from legal services, whether it be from the website that the students set up, et cetera. So, and with respect to the rent abatement, I think it's dangerous to put that on the form, because it is used in such, so rarely. It's a Rose Oaks kind of remedy that is just not going to be applicable. Yeah. So those are, those are my thoughts and it's Stan's thoughts, and I can't, I've got his email up here, is there anything I'm missing?
I think you covered those concerns as well. Again, the link to the new website seems to be agreeable by all parties, but as Eleanor stated, we're just, we're just afraid that this is getting a little too unwieldy as it is and that it's not, it's not timely. So I don't think there's incorrect information that UISG is suggesting, but we wouldn't recommend putting it in there.
That's sort of my thought, and, but I think really where the students come in is to daylight existing parts of the process. I mean, so for example, how to file a complaint, right? I mean, or if they don't have heat, or if there's a problem with their landlord, or there's whatever, we have an inspection process for off-campus apartments. So I think that would be my thought, is try to identify those positions and daylight them as much as possible, so the students can know how to utilize the resources that are already available, is my thought.
I should say, we have, with previous student liaisons, there have been suggestions to add information, and we have, we, staff has, you know, agreed with that and council has approved it. It's just, it's becoming too big, too unwieldy, and I don't think particularly an effective way of getting information out.
Well, I mean, I just, yeah, I, that's good to hear, because not, you know, I'm not involved with it, so not knowing where this is going, I'd even look at number six, trash and recycling.
Extreme weather, Jim?
You know, it's listing all these various city code sections that students aren't going to care about at that point in time. I mean, it's more, if you want to know more about trash and recycling, go to this website. I just, yeah, kind of being able to pick and choose what they need. And I think, I would agree, by the time you get to two full pages, very dense text, you know, it may get filled out right, it may not, they sign it, and if it's being done at the time of the rental, it's, I wouldn't want to bet how many of them end up with in the trash can or the recycling container, because they're just so busy trying to get moved in. But I think if you've got a better website, that, you know, you're acknowledging, is that something that through the student government or within conjunction with staff at the university, that you can, that you have some input to the content of that website and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. I think emphasizing that.
Yeah, we've encouraged a better link, and I think that's, that's great, if that-
Yeah, I would think even taking some of the things that are on here and shortening them up and referring them to, you know, to the website could be more positive. I don't think you want to get more than two pages.
Yeah, and I think kind of the idea behind at least the first part of the issues of health and safety is really kind of identifying and letting individuals and tenants know that you can reach out, because I think that's the important component there. That it's not necessarily, like, the rent abatement, that was just kind of tied in there because it was related to health and safety. But really, if there's some type of short statement, in my opinion, just saying, "These are available, and if you encounter an issue, if you are a tenant, you can go to these," or seek out, for example, the city in legal services as a broad sense, because you probably can't say specific legal services or anything like that. But, yeah, that's in terms of, kind of, that follow-up.
Sounds like the proposal needs to be fine-tuned, and especially focusing on this link, and that's what I'm hearing from other council people, and strengthening what's at the link at that website.
Sounds good.
Is that, is that what I'm hearing from everybody up here?
Yeah, a lot of change at this point.
Yeah, just try to keep it to the two pages, you know, and maybe some of these other sections can be shortened up a little bit with the reference to various, even some of them are city websites. I think that, I think people get more out of that, at least than if they've got a bold title here when they have an issue down the road and they have a website link to go to to get more of that information, rather than trying to keep it all, make this so long, I think would be helpful.
I guess I'll just shift gears here, if I couldn't briefly talk about IP 8, the memo from city attorney regarding alcohol price specials. You know, I think that the wisdom of previous councils in terms of identifying, it is a complicated issue to regulate price. That said, I mean, this arose in the context of an alcohol special during a weather-related emergency, and maybe I would throw it back at Eleanor, is it even possible to do a price regulation in a weather emergency context? I mean, you know, maybe common sense would be our guide here, but it just, what happened, it just shouldn't be allowed. And maybe just we'll have to rely on common sense in the future, and hopefully they were shamed enough based upon what happened. But it was outrageous. We won't name the institution, but it really was outrageous. And, so I guess we can sort of leave it as is for now, but it just, it just really made a lot of people angry, and it was extremely dangerous. And so, I assume we can't tie it to weather emergencies. It would probably be too difficult or complicated.
Post-traumatic stress syndrome from going through those.
Yeah, no, I mean, no one wants to touch happy hours or stuff like that, but, so I guess we'll just have to let common sense be archived, right? Don't do it again.
I was pretty happy I was not part of those conversations.
I was like, oh, I have to relive this. Yeah, I think you're-
So I'll put that one, see, Gustav, I don't know, see there, so, you know, hey, it happens.
Put it on a shelf at home somewhere.
I'll refine it, just like Gustav is going to.
Okay, any other items?
I just, I did enjoy reading that quarterly report from the Climate Action Advisory Board.
I think they're determined to do what we asked them to do, and that's a very good thing. I sat in on their most recent monthly meeting, just, pretty much just listening, except when they asked me specific questions. And, yeah, I was very impressed with it. We're lucky they're there. Okay, I think we can go to the last item, which is the updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees and all that kind of stuff. So John, let's start with you and go to the left.
I don't have anything to report.
The only thing I would report is the City of Literature Met, and we got a terrific update on One Book to a Book. I've never been able to actually make that, but it always gets rave reviews. And it's, I think what John Kenyon really reports is, for those of you who don't know, One Book to a Book is an opportunity for young aspiring writers to read their work publicly. And probably the most gratifying thing that John points out is the growth that he sees even from their practice reading through the time they do the actual reading, in terms of their allocation, in terms of how they present. Everything is total growth, and it really showcases how talented our young people are. And as, you know, Bob Elliott said, how talented these kids are that read in front of us. I hear half of their writing, I'm like, goodness gracious, you guys are, you guys are terrific. They all write snappy prose and have such good moral character. So it was another fantastic event, and I think we're going to go a little bit into the planning stage now for, you know, some of our events this summer, with like the music festival, IAC Music, and then of course with the book festival in the fall. And John continues to really put us on the map in terms of the world literary scene, so they're continuing to connect with the other Unesco cities of literature. So always terrific things that he has in connection with that particular committee.
Bruce?
I have nothing.
Um, Jack hasn't met, I don't think since last time, but we have the Access Center continuing to work on that. Had a meeting with some staff members last week to start working on the 28E agreement. So kind of plopped that in Eleanor and Janet Linus's hands to kind of be working on that piece of it. And we continue with steering committee meetings twice a month, executive committee meetings twice a month, steering committee meetings once a month. So just starting to get into the weeds of all the details of actually having a building come together, so.
Okay, good deal. Well, the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board was supposed to meet on the 21st of February, but the meeting was canceled. I guess some people pulled out at the last second, so they didn't have enough people. out at the last second, so they didn't have enough people. Partnership for Alcohol Safety met on the 5th of March and I thought we had a very productive discussion about the partnership's overall vision and about creating committees to pursue particular aspects of that vision. So we're trying to put a little more life into it. Would you agree, Simon? I'm a Simon visitor. Yeah. Yeah, that's what I can say.
Pauline?
Oh, he's gone.
Oh, she is gone, okay.
I think, folks, we're done.
All right.
Thank you.